... meeting of the Waynesboro City Council. Terry, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Terry. All right, welcome everybody to the council meeting tonight. For those that are in attendance, we've got two public hearings and a citizen comment period. If you wish to speak at either, figure out which public hearing you want to sign up for, look at the sign and sheets in the back for the right public hearing, and then if you're here for citizen comment period, sign up for the citizen comment period. Again, welcome everybody to tonight's meeting, and we'll get going here. Has everyone had an opportunity to review our meeting agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haasiter. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-oh. Thank you very much. Matters for Mayor, I've got a couple of things tonight. I guess the first and foremost on my schedule is that the -- we need to give a big shout out to our Public Works Department under the direction of Dwayne Schwartz tonight. Last week, we had a surprise visit from Environmental Protection Agency that were traveling around with the Virginia Department of Health, and they did an inspection on our public work facilities, water and sewer department. It was a routine inspection, we did nothing wrong, it was just an inspection. They were traveling with Virginia Department of Health, they came by and inspected our facilities, and after the inspection, the Environmental Protection Agency said the citizens of Waynesboro served well, our water and sewer is run really well, and there was no complaints or issues with our water and sewer. So, I want to thank those folks for a job well done. Another thing that I would like to remind everybody, I put it on my Facebook page, and we still got a couple of months out, but in Fishersville, the Ram -- Remote Area Medical Clinic has come into the city of Waynes -- or not city of Waynesboro, Fishersville Exfoland, but November 19th and 20th, these folks provides free medical care for citizens of the Sawes region, Stanton, Augusta, Waynesboro. And if you're a dental person, either -- what is it they're looking for? A dental hygienist, oral surgeon, or dentist -- dental technicians, they want your help if you don't mind volunteering your time for two days to help folks that don't have health insurance and that sort of thing. They're also looking for medical professionals such as physicians, physician assistants, nurse practitioners, nurses, medics, and EMTs, so if you could lend your skills there. If you're in the vision field, optometrist, optomologist, opticians, optical techs, and optometric techs, your work is also needed. And then general support, if you're just wanting to be a volunteer and help out this project here, they need people to help with registration, they need interpreters, they need guide, they need folks with food services, and other support positions. If you're a night owl, they've got several positions on their website where they would like somebody to help guard the parking lot overnight because all the equipment and stuff is going to be there, and they'll need folks to watch the parking lot. So, for those in our community, put down November 9th through the 20th, and come out and support this great cause and this great opportunity for our community. And I've got one more thing here, and September starts Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and I've got a proclamation I'd like to present tonight. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease, and children with one in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday. Whereas 46 children per day, or 16,790 children per year, are diagnosed with cancer in the United States, with the average age of diagnosis six, compared to 66 years of age with adults diagnosed with cancer. Where -- I forgot to read the end, you told me how to do that. Whereas there are approximately 40,000 children on active treatment at any given time, with 80% of childhood cancer patients being diagnosed late with -- help me out, Donna.
Metastatic diseases.
On average, there has been only 0.06% increase in incidence per year since the mid-1970, resulting in an overall incident increase of 24% over the last 40 years. Two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment, toxicity, and one-quarter being classified as severe life-threatening. And whereas approximately one-half of childhood cancer families rate the association -- approximately one-half of childhood cancer families rate the associated financial toxicities due to auto-opa expenses as considerable and severe. Whereas in the last 20 years, only four drugs have been approved by the FDA in specific treatment for childhood cancer. The National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needed of childhood cancer and the association needed for increased funding to carry this out. Researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently, dedicating their expertise and treat to cure childhood cancer and childhood cancer diseases. Whereas, hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level have included the American Childhood Cancer Organization, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through these educational and emotional times with financial support. Now therefore, I Bobby Henderson, Mayor of the city of Waynesboro, Virginia, do by proclaim September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Waynesboro. To raise awareness of this deadly disease and to find a cure, I encourage citizens to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support the cause that deeply impact families in every community across the country. Donna Adshar, can I present this to you? Okay, that concludes what I have, so. Item number six is -- item number five is matters from council members. Any other member have? I know Dr. Haasiter will.
Okay, I'll keep my comments brief. My mask is back on, or still on. We briefly in Augusta County and Waynesboro have gotten into the green, but we slid backwards again. Waynesboro as of the -- my look at the map today was yellow, and Augusta County had gone red again. Now, some of that may be related to some statistical changes again, we had a big shift of about 150, 200 cases that -- so, again, it's always hard to read, but I'm just going to go with the data because I can't sort of keep talking my way out of it. So, my mask is back on. Hopefully, we will see that disappear soon. Second thing, I've been trying different times for my constituent meetings, so we're going to try a different time again. The first Tuesday in September, which is the 6th of September, 3:30 at the French Press. Okay? It's an open constituent meeting. Anyone who's interested in checking in or giving me thoughts or ideas, I will be there at 3:30.
And that's open to anybody from any ward?
Right, for anybody in the city, sure. All right, I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You?
Yeah.
All right, that brings us to item number six. Item number six is to consider the adoption of our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt our consent agenda as presented?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-oh. Thank you all very much. Item number seven is our first public hearing of the night. Item number seven is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance rezoning a portion of the properties at 122712 West Main Street and 0 Ludewitt Boulevard, Waynesboro, Virginia, tax map number 51-20-1-1, comma, 51-20-20-2, comma, 62-8-3-2, comma, and 61-2-3-1, period. Applicant is declined, EB1LLC, RCC6LLC. Lesley, I'm glad you got this one.
So, I think we have the wrong -- the wrong tax map numbers on that one. This one is just 21-1-1 and 21-1-5, but everything else you said was completely accurate. So, the first request before you this evening is an application to rezone a 16.4 acre portion of those two tax maps from highway business to multifamily residential. So, the property is located east of Ludewitt Boulevard, south of West Main, and west of Bookerdale Road. The parcels in question are represented with a blue outline, and the portion shaded in red dots is the 16.4 acre portion that's requested to be changed from highway business to multifamily residential. So, the current zoning of the property is highway business, which allows all commercial uses and some light industrial uses. It's a zoning district meant for businesses that rely on close proximity to major transportation routes, and it's restricted to areas that are really located on arterials and highways. The proposed multifamily residential zoning would accommodate higher density multifamily living. It allows a density up to 20 units per acre, it does permit a maximum height of 65 feet, and then it also permits townhouses at a maximum density of 10 units per acre. This map just shows the rezoning exhibit, and so you can see those two tax map parcel numbers. The 21-1-5 is the smaller one that's up to the north of the plat on Ludewitt, and then the larger parcel is 21-1-1. And the orange outline is the area proposed to change, whereas the rest would remain highway business. This is a picture of the property from Ludewitt Boulevard. Excuse me, so surrounding uses, the uses surrounding the property are a mix of residential and commercial. The property sits directly behind the existing Amazon facility, and you can also see labels for Sharp Shopper and EJ's. To the north, to the east, you have some single-family residential development, also existing apartments, and then on the other side of Ludewitt Boulevard, the Tractor Supply and Augusta Health offices. The current zoning of the property is mostly highway business, so what you see in red, but there are -- there is some residential multifamily adjacent, so existing zoning and existing development, and then there is some RG5 zoning to the south that is -- has not currently developed, is vacant. The comprehensive plan designates the property for commercial retail, so therefore rezoning to the multifamily residential is not specifically consistent with the land use map. However, neighboring properties are being utilized for multifamily living, and the plan does recommend that we support a variety of housing types, and encourages alternative forms and many modes and types of housing. This is a concept plan that was submitted by the applicant. I will note that the concept plan is not proffered, but the concept plan shows roughly 180 apartments and 27 condos. The apartments are labeled as three to four stories, and then along the frontage at Ludewitt, you'll see that it's planned for retail and office space in that portion that's remaining business. So, the utilities and stormwater infrastructure will all be reviewed and approved during the site plan review process. There should be adequate water and sewer capacity, and that would obviously be part of the site plan process too, in terms of any upgrades that are needed, and the school system has sufficient capacity. The traffic impacts and pedestrian safety were some of staff's main concerns. The development's main entrance will be on a private access drive that really will direct traffic to Ludewitt Boulevard and West Main Street. So, it's anticipated that Ludewitt would see the biggest impacts from traffic generated at the site. So, the staff did request that the applicant complete a traffic impact analysis, and it was reviewed by VDOT district staff. The development is expected to generate a little over 2,000 average daily trips at full build-out. No additional in-traffic improvements were warranted with that study. However, VDOT did note that while no new traffic improvements were warranted, it would not take much additional increase in trip generation or change in the assumed traffic distribution to lead to side-street delays that may lead to a future safety issue. VDOT also recommends that all options for future interparcial connections be explored. So, staff like VDOT feels that a secondary -- permanent secondary access is important. Unfortunately, there's not a good way to provide that currently in the now. So, in order to address some of those concerns, the applicant did proffer a Boulevard-style entrance as a means of separating incoming and exiting trips. This picture is of a development in Augusta County, Village Green at the Lake, but they utilize a Boulevard entrance into the property. So, the applicant did proffer that to kind of help separate the traffic. In addition, they have proffered an emergency access point that will be provided behind the Amazon facility, and staff did confirm that there is a deed agreement that ensures that that access will remain open and accessible. And then lastly, a future interparcial connection will be stubbed out and provided to the parcel to the south. So, the image on your screen kind of shows those three options. So, the primary access up by Ludewitt will be a Boulevard-style entrance, and then the emergency access, you see it goes through the Amazon facility, and that's over closer to Bookerdale Road. And then the permanent secondary access, once the property to the south were to develop, would be down there at the south of the property. In the analysis, staff also identified some concerns related to pedestrians being able to reach West Main and Ludewitt. The West Main Street Stars study improvements that were funded in the previous round of Smart Scale does include pedestrian improvements like sidewalks and crosswalks on 250. So, the applicant has proffered that they will construct sidewalks along the private access road from the development's entrance out to Ludewitt and to West Main Street. So, given the existing multifamily development in the area, the connection to transit, and nearby amenities, multifamily development on a portion of the subject parcels is not unreasonable. The Planning Commission does recommend approval of the rezoning with the proffers, and I won't read those word for word, but essentially in recap, it would be the sidewalks that would be provided along their private access drives, the Boulevard entrance, the emergency access, and the stub out to the property to the south for a future secondary connection. So, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
When you said that the sidewalks would go from out to Ludewitt, and then it would go to West Main Street, is that going to run along Ludewitt?
Well, so I know that the Smart Scale Stars study has improvements along 250. This -- with this application, the proffer would not include them doing any kind of improvements along Ludewitt, but I'd have to look at if we have a funded project related to that or not. But this proffer would not contribute any sidewalk along Ludewitt.
But a snuggle have a sidewalk going out to West Main Street?
Yeah, so in the internal connections, they would do a sidewalk from their entrance just out to Ludewitt, not along Ludewitt, but out there, and then also up to West Main.
That's my question, up to West Main, first is it will go from the entrance on Ludewitt up to West Main?
No, through the internal connection of the subdivision.
Okay.
Through their private roadways, they would be providing sidewalks, so essentially someone from the apartments could walk along sidewalks to get to Ludewitt, and then separately also walk along sidewalks to get up to West Main. It's not providing --
The property didn't go up to West Main, though, does it?
It -- so, it is a part of -- let me go back to this. I think it's this way. Yeah, so it -- the property is outlined in blue, so it does go up to West Main.
Okay.
So, they would take you up to -- from the subdivision to West Main by the, I guess it's the T-Mobile building in that area there now?
Yeah, through their internal sidewalk system.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's next to Sharp Shopper.
I was about to say, Sharp Shopper or T-Mobile?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
They haven't proposed a specific alignment, other than that the sidewalks would be provided there, so that's something that would -- could be evaluated.
Now, there's no -- not currently a light coming out where their main primary access.
Right.
But the traffic studies did not show that that would be --
So, the traffic study said that it would be a little over 2,000 average daily trips, and that it would operate -- I hate to use the word "fine," but it would operate adequately with those number of trips, but that it would take a very small additional number of trips or a change in the distribution of traffic to call some delays on side streets.
On side streets, so they'd be sitting, waiting to get out of there?
To turn left.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm having fuzzy memory now, but on Ludewitt, there is a -- I don't know if it's in the -- if it's in the Greenway Plan, or if it's the 20, 2007 Land Use Plan, the Eastern Land Use Plan was -- or Western Land Use Plan was about a shared-use path or a sidewalk along Ludewitt. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I don't, I'd have to check and see.
Yeah, because I -- that's my only thought, I mean, they have very negligible frontage, but to the extent that I think it's on the Zeus side, if I recall correctly, I think that's where it was sort of envisioned, but the -- just ensuring that if it were, if there were an opportunity, if it made more sense to be on the other side, it's not been a whole lot of investment out there to that effect. I, you know, on occasion, I think like a lot of folks have seen the occasional pedestrian walking down Ludewitt, right? And so, to the extent that we can just make sure that if there's additional right-of-way that's required, that that would be something I think of interest, just so if you all had chatted about that at all.
It's not something that came up.
Okay.
Do we know how many apartments are existing now on Bookerdale Road?
I do not have that number, you -- so, the ones that are in the Alston are not Alston Ashton Village Apartments, I'm not sure of that number. But it is fully developed out, I guess, that specific parcel.
It's a road that I very seldom ever see a pedestrian on, on Bookerdale Road.
Oh, Bookerdale, no.
Of course, that's a narrow road, no sidewalks.
Right.
And the applicant is here to present.
Thank you, Lesley. Hey, and I don't know if I've introduced Lesley, but Lou Jaday, our former planner, has gone on to bigger and better things, and Lesley was hired to take his part as our city planner, so welcome aboard, Lesley Tate. All right, so I hereby open the public hearing.
So, no one has signed up to speak, but Ms. Tate noted that the applicant is here. I don't know if the applicant wants to make remarks, or if we're -- so, yes, sir, you could call in the applicant first.
If you'd just introduce yourself, and go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Ray Burke Holder with Balzer &amp; Associates, One of Four Industry Way Stanton. Couple of things I wanted to just note real quickly, Lesley did a good job giving you a great overview of the project. There is a floodplain to the western northern side up against Ludewitt. We would definitely be amenable to give us some right-of-way theory if that's what was needed, because we can't do anything with it anyway, so. And then there is a large stormwater basin that's positioned in that site too, kind of right about where the HB is, that was put in back when the center was developed. So, again, we went round and round with different transportation options, trying to sort this out. I feel like we've got something that will support, be supported, and we went through that with engineering and the fire department several times, and I think having that needed access into the backside of Amazon is pretty beneficial to ensure that that's always there, so happy to answer any other questions you all have, or...
Just a technical question, 65 feet is how many floors? It said that it could be up to, zoned up to 65 feet.
Yeah, that's, I guess, in y'all's ordinance. Depends on the number, but probably about six floors is typical, or something like that.
That'd be high.
I don't see that happening, we don't see very -- too many of those.
Yeah, who's right, things good seeing you. So, yeah, it's the 2007 plan, it's a -- yes, it calls for a bike, a shared-use path, actually ironically on both sides, so there's a green one that section, there's a point that goes up, before you get to Shepherd, there's a Greenway planned route, and then the entire Ludewitt section on your side is, calls for a dedicated bike facility, I don't know, we'll just call it whatever it is. So, that's if, so you all could accomplish that, that's great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No one else, sorry.
All right, I hereby close the public hearing. Is there a -- is there a motion? Let's see here. Yeah, is there a motion to approve this?
Yep, I'll make that motion, I'm just, with the staff's recommendation, the proffered conditions, and an acknowledgement by the applicant's representative for, to coordinate with staff for the --
And today, we're just introducing the ordinance.
Right, right, so just so I formally introduce what the motion is, to include bike accommodation as envisioned by the 2007 Waynesboro Land Use Plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right, any discussion? All right, this item will be carried over for final consideration at our September 12th regular business meeting. Brings me to item number eight. Item number eight is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending an approved plan unit development for Waynesboro Place at Windy Grove Drive. Lesley, your turn again.
Oops. Okay.
My name is Ray Burke Holder with Balzer &amp; Associates, One of Four Industry Way Stanton. Couple of things I wanted to just note real quickly. Leslie did a good job giving you a great overview of the project. There is a floodplain to the western northern side up against Ludewitt. We would definitely be amenable to give us some right-of-way theory if that's what was needed, because we can't do anything with it anyway, so... And then there is a large stormwater basin that's positioned in that site, too, kind of right about where the HB is, that was put in back when the center was developed. So, again, we went round and around with different transportation options, trying to sort this out. I feel like we've got something that will support, be supported. I know we went through that with engineering and the fire department several times, and I think having that needed access into the backside of Amazon is pretty beneficial to ensure that that's always there. So, happy to answer any other questions you all have.
Just a technical question. 65 feet is how many floors? It said that it could be zoned up to 65 feet.
Yeah, that's, I guess, in y'all's ordinance. Depends on the number, but probably about six floors is typical, or something like that. I don't see that happening. We don't see too many of those.
Yeah. Right, things good seeing you. So, yeah, it's the 2007 plan. It's a, yes, it calls for a bike, a shared use path, actually ironically on both sides. So, there's a greenway on that section. There's a point that goes up. Before you get to Shepherd, there's a Greenway planned route, and then the entire Ludewitt section on your side is, calls for a dedicated bike facility, I don't know, just call it whatever it is. So, that's, if, so you all could accomplish that. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No one else, sorry.
All right, I hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Let's see here. Yeah, is there a motion to approve this?
Yep, I'll make that motion. I'm just, with the staff's recommendation, the proffer conditions, and an acknowledgement by the applicant's representative for, to coordinate with staff for the-
And today, we're just introducing the ordinance.
Right, right. So, just so I formally introduce what the motion is, to include bike accommodation as envisioned by the 2007 Waynesboro Land Use Plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right, any discussion? All right, this item will be carried over for final consideration at our September 12th regular business meeting. Brings me to item number eight. Item number eight is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending an approved plan unit development for Waynesboro Place at Windy Grove Drive. Leslie, your turn again.
Oops. Okay. So, the next public hearing on your agenda this evening is a request to amend the approved plan unit development known as Waynesboro Place located at Windy Grove Drive. So, the existing PUD includes several parcels, but the request to change to add just an additional permitted use pertains to a particular parcel that is south of Windy Grove Drive and directly north of I-64. And you can kind of see it circled in between those two 64 markers. So, the proposed amendment includes the addition of hotels and motels as a permitted use in Block Two of the development. And I'll show you in a minute the concept map that lays out all the blocks, but just to give a little bit of history, the last amendment to the Windy Grove PUD was in 2017, when a portion of Block Two was reallocated to Block Three. So, Block Three is where the existing apartments are, and so there was some more apartment development, and so some block lines were changed for that. Block Two is currently approved for, I'm not going to list them all, but some of them being amusement and recreation uses, retail, grocery store, office uses, repair or service, drugstores, et cetera. So, kind of has already a wide range of approved commercial uses. And then I'll also note that the current plan unit development is approved for a maximum of 3,782 trips in Phase One. And then the existing proffers would require a new traffic impact analysis be completed for any development that generates greater than that number. This is just a map of the property from Windy Grove, and then you can see the existing So, surrounding the uses, the property would be between the Home Depot and the existing Windy Grove Apartments. To the north are the Brandon Circle Town Homes, and then other uses along Windy Grove include restaurants and hotels. There's also an existing single-family residential neighborhood to the north. The current zoning of the property is already a plan unit development with allowable retail uses. You can see adjacent property is zoned highway business. There's some RG5 zoning, some residential 12, and light industrial on the other side of the interstate. The comprehensive plan designates the area for commercial, retail, and high-density residential development, so staff feels that the request is in keeping with the future land use map. So, these are the traffic numbers. So, the updated traffic numbers that were provided by the applicant demonstrate that a 90-room hotel would be approximately 432 average daily trips. So, with the existing proposed apartments and the proposed hotel use and trips associated with some general office and medical office, the trip generation is estimated to fall just right within the 3,782 trips that are allotted for the Phase One traffic improvement. So, the Phase One improvements have already been completed, and this falls within that category. And I will put up, or point out that in the original plan unit development, Phase Two had an additional trip generation up to 8,532. But because of the proffers that were approved at the time, it said if these improvements are completed by a certain year, then a new traffic impact analysis would have to be submitted past the Phase One. So, anything more than the 3,782 would trigger a new traffic impact analysis. And this is the block layout. So, you can see the purple represents Block Three, and that is specifically geared toward multifamily residential development. Block Two, the orange, that's south of Windy Grove Drive and directly north of the interstate, that's the block we're talking about tonight, that's just permitting a hotel motel use in addition to the other long list of commercial uses that are already approved. And then to the north, you can see Block One, which kind of scales back a little bit to be more compatible with the residential development to the north, and is envisioned to be more like different offices, medical or general office development. So, we did have some individuals speak at the Planning Commission meeting, and we did have some citizens send in some written comments, and the concerns mainly focused around traffic. But given the existing permitted uses and the approved traffic impact phasing, staff does feel that the hotel motel use is not unreasonable at that location. The Planning Commission also recommended approval of the request. And you will note in your packets, the Planning Commission also wanted to send along an additional recommendation, although they did recommend approval of this request, noting that the traffic impact study showed that they had completed their improvements to be up to the 3,782 trips. They did request that City Council review parking along Windy Grove, so some of the complaint was that there is parking allowed on Windy Grove, and some of the citizens had concerns about that, and to consider reducing the speed limit permitted on Windy Grove. The Planning Commission also recommends that City Council review the speed limit on Rossar Avenue, kind of between the intersection of Rossar Avenue and Windy Grove, and then Rossar Avenue and Alston Court, so kind of within that vicinity. You know, certainly if parking is not allowed on Windy Grove, I would think that would just increase the speed, but just to point out some of those concerns. But they did recommend approval of the rezoning request.
Thank you, Leslie.
And they do have, you can see the internal trip reduction. And I guess from some of the other existing uses along Windy Grove, I guess there's another hotel, several restaurants. Yeah, and residential.
Because I think the original PUD concept was retail supporting residential, and as we march along, wild success they had over here, there's certainly an departure and reduction in retail and addition to rebuild. So, I guess I would be very curious if the, if they did understand the justification for a reduction of 239 trips, because if you double the count with 239, their seating there is one.
Yeah, they would be over, because it's, yeah, 3,722. And the applicant's also here to address this one.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Leslie. I open the public hearing.
Good evening again. I'll just start by answering a couple of questions. So, this is not a chart that demonstrates what all is built today. So, none of the general office or medical has been built. So, we were asked to provide a example of what would get us up to that threshold. So, the internal trips were part of the original study, so that's, we didn't edit that. So, anyway, as we move forward, we'll have to accommodate any future uses beyond the hotel and just see where that number gets us, so.
Just for clarification, the 239 internal reduction was a result of the result composition that is no longer part of development?
Well, there is still retail. It's just less.
You know what I mean. It's not like-
Yeah. It's not as significant. Yeah, yep.
And then, if, once you exceed 3,782, the Phase Two traffic improvements need to be in place prior to enhancing, correct?
Correct, or a new study performed.
Or a new study.
Good. All right. Anybody else have questions?
No one else has signed up to speak, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I hereby close the public hearing. All right, is there a motion to introduce this ordinance?
Mayor, I'd offer that council might consider tabling the matter until the traffic study has been updated to reflect the internal trip reductions that are no longer present. Lots transpired since the development has matured. Certainly, incredible growth from the residential base. I mean, I'm not saying that I'm not supportive of the change in use, but I'm also saying we've seen a lot of growth along that corridor organically, and then, again, with the uses as envisioned right now, I think, you know, it's not a full-on traffic impact study. I think we owe it to ourselves and our community to, is there at least, you know, a traffic analysis of some, some thoughts?
I'm not knowing the mechanism by which we accomplish that. What would you propose?
Or back to the applicant and to table the matter until a traffic, a traffic analysis provided to staff with their review and consideration.
Is that a motion, Mr. Short?
Yes, I'll make that before I move on.
Is there a second for Mr. Short's motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Allen? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh for, table this for further traffic analysis. Did I close the public hearing? I closed. Yeah. All right. Item nine is to consider introducing an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 budget in the amount of $2,232,000. Mr. McCormick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
This one's yours.
It is. Thank you. Good evening. So, this is funded through three different mechanisms. $2,072,000 of unassigned and unrestricted fund balance in net position from the fiscal year 2021 comprehensive annual financial report. These items were identified during our city manager's budget, city manager's introduction of the budget process during 2023. Large items on those were some HVAC maintenance at the Rosenwald Building. This will take the boiler there offline and start to install many splits. That's a partial funding of that project, but should get the boiler that's existing offline. Police vehicles and the amount of $234,000, that'll buy approximately three police vehicles. We haven't gotten final updated numbers. We usually do cooperative procurement through the state for our police vehicles, and we haven't received final numbers, but we think that'll fund around three, and those will be maintenance vehicles to replace existing cars, not further a take-home car program. IT network segmentation for $175,000, that's just to continue to compartmentalize our IT network so that if we ever do have a breach or a hack into our, into our network, that it gets segmented into a certain spot, and we can quarantine it and remove the threat. We have a South River Crossing, which is a maintenance project in the water fund for $275,000, HVAC for the water plants for $130,000, and then a trash truck in the refuse fund for $210,000. There's also $152,906 of grant revenue. Most of that is for some CDBG COVID relief funding, I'm sorry, not CDBG, some COVID relief funding for the CAPSOL fund in the amount of $126,610. That's fully grant-funded. And then there's also $7,300 of donations and miscellaneous sales. If council wishes, they can introduce this amendment this evening. We will need to have a public hearing at the next council meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. McCormick? Is there a motion to introduce this ordinance?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Seder. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any discussion? This motion will be carried over to our next business meeting. Item number 10 is to consider adopting a resolution in support of Virginia Economics Grant Partnership Ready Site Grant Application. Mr. Hitchens?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As we've discussed on multiple occasions, we are endeavoring to create a new industrial land prepared for future jobs, investment, and tax revenue. In 2012, the city purchased 170 acres off of Interstate 64 at Exit 96. Subsequently, the city applied for and received a VDOT Smart Scale grant to complete a connector road between Exit 94 and Exit 96, which will also be the main access road through the industrial park. And in 2019, the city applied for and received over $200,000 from VEDP, Virginia Business Ready Sites Program, to assist with the water and sewer design. If you're a student of Waynesboro history, this process might sound a little familiar. So, in 1980, 1980s, the city acquired 111 acres near Interstate 64, excuse me, and created a Waynesboro Commercial Industrial Park, and using the state program at the time, built a 75,000-square-foot shell building to attract future development. The foresight of creating the publicly-owned industrial park and construction of a shell building saved what is now one of the city's largest employers. The new shell building became, ultimately came home to Polybond, as in 1992, they moved into that building after considering a move out of the city because they could not handle their current growth in their current building, which is now Berry Plastics. A couple of expansions later for Berry, a reuse of the Chantel Headquarters to Dupont Credit Union Headquarters brings us today, the area is home to over 500 employees and on average has generated over $1 million in direct tax revenue per year. The city is not alone in our venture to create industrial land. In the Shenandoah Valley partnership footprint, there are 11 publicly-owned industrial parks. Eight of the 13 jurisdictions have an industrial park, all in various stages developed, some developed, some not, but all moving towards the direction that we are trying to accomplish. And that direction is to move this, move our status to a Tier Four status, which is the desired level of readiness. As a reminder, the Commonwealth of Virginia uses a zero-to-five tier ranking system for industrial land. Zero is bad, five is fully graded. Tier Four indicates that a minimum requirements have been met, including all the basic engineering studies, zoning is correct, and all infrastructure is in place or planned to be in place within 12 months. The Southern Corridor Connector Road is expected to start construction in mid-2023 with a mid-2025 completion date. For fiscal '23, the Commonwealth of Virginia has allotted $85 million for site development through the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program. Tonight, we're asking for your support in applying for this grant to complete the onsite water and sewer construction. The July 2022 estimate to complete this construction is $7.8 million. The grant requires a 25% match. However, we are allowed to count funds expended within the last five years towards our match. Therefore, our match will be at maximum $918,000 with a grant request of $6.9 million. The resolution we're asking tonight indicates your support of the grant application and authorizes the city manager to complete the application and assurance of that match. Be happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hitchens. Anybody have anything? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hitchens. Great job. All right, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just ask that it might be a good opportunity, as we consider the resolution, to, in the near future, maybe host a work session to sort of talk about the future of the industrial park, the vision, game plan, strategy, and all things that one might consider, just so we can be better informed and better advocates for the project.
Okay. And that's a good consideration, and I talked to staff about it today, and I talked to other members. With the elections two months away and two seats up, it might be a good idea to wait until after the November election and give the other, whoever wins the election, the opportunity to be part of that conversation, so. All right, so we've got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you all very much. Item number 11 is to consider adopting a resolution of concurrence relating to a debt issuance for a hangar expansion project at the Shenandoah Valley Regional Airport. Mr. Hamp, this one's you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This project may ring familiar to you as well. In 2019, the council adopted a similar resolution when the project was originally conceived. Because of the COVID pandemic, the project progress was interrupted, and this is the same hangar improvement, hangar expansion project that the airport representatives described in 2019, but with the interruption around COVID, they simply were not able to complete the design phase. the design phase and initiate construction, complete bidding, et cetera. And the resolution and interim financing that they had in place originally is set to expire, and the constituting documents that form the regional airport require that member jurisdictions must authorize indebtedness. So this simply acknowledges that as a member jurisdiction, we approve of the debt, we are not incurring the debt, and the debt does not show up on our books. We're simply acknowledging that we support the project.
Any discussion? Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haasetter. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you very much. That brings us to item 12. Item 12 is to consider adopting a resolution approving a lease agreement between the city of Waynesboro and the Shenandoah, Shenandoah Juvenile Services Center. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir, this is also a regional agency in which the city participates with the juvenile detention home or juvenile services facility. Other member jurisdictions include the cities of Harrisonburg, Lexington, and Stanton. The counties of Augusta, Rockingham, and Rockbridge also participate with us. It's been some time since the member jurisdictions established lease agreements with the facility. The state requires member jurisdictions to have a formal agreement in place with the facility, and this document simply reflects the current and up-to-date agreement or lease agreement that the city will establish contingent upon your approval. It describes business as we have always conducted business. Our prorata share is determined by our use of the facility, and I would note that presently that is subsidized heavily because of the federal program that we partner with the federal government on. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to ask. Coincidentally, Litton and Syke also prepared the lease document, so Jordan can speak to any questions you have on the lease, but this is mainly a updating exercise.
Any questions? All right, explained it well, Mr. Hamp.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 13 is to consider appointing Kathy Nixon to the Library Board of Trustees for a four-year term ending August 31, 2026. Is there a motion to approve Ms. Nixon?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haasetter. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you very much. Item 14 is to consider reappointing Mary Ann Everly Mopin to the Waynesboro Redevelopment and Housing Authority for a four-year term ending August 31, 2026. Is there a motion to reappoint Ms. Mopin?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 15, correspondence, communications, and calendar. Mr. Hamp.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Okay. All right, item 16 is for citizen comment period.
Yes, sir, Ms. Lisa Jefferies.
Okay, there's citizen comment period. We've got a timer up here, and you're welcome to make a comment for up to four minutes. When you get to three and a half minutes, the yellow light will come on to warn you. You've got 30 seconds to start winding down. At four minutes, the red light, and we ask you to kindly give up the podium for the next, okay?
Good evening, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jefferies.
Mr. Mayor, I am the Director of Elections for the City of Waynesboro, and as you all have been working, and I have been working with city staff, Todd Wood has been awesome to deal with, about moving my office to the lower level of the library. Under those circumstances, I was under the impression that I would have the full lower level of the library. I would not have to worry about any kind of security issues because there is with voting equipment, and as we all know, with elections being highlighted so much in the news nowadays, the security is extremely important. So today, I went down to make sure that things were moving because tomorrow is moving day for me. What I found was atrocious, and I have pictures of a stairwell that at the bottom of it, I'm not going to describe what it was, but when you go through the doorway there, or if you, it was unlocked, or they could get unlocked, they would be coming right directly into where my office would be. I'm understanding that I have to coexist with the library staff. I have no intentions to go upstairs. I have no need to be upstairs. My part is downstairs. There are things that we had talked to the city about doing, having set up for security issues, and the state would not be happy with the current situation that's happening right now. My board is not planning for me to move tomorrow. They have a meeting scheduled for Friday at 10:00 a.m., and any one of you are welcome to attend and discuss that with them. But right now, I have been doing my due diligence, packed my office up. It is a mess. That's why I'm dressed like I am today. And when I get to the library today, I see that there are books everywhere in the voting area. I was not expecting that, and to be able, it's not going to be able to work for my elections, your elections, to happen with security and the situation that we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jefferies.
Ms. Tiffany Sensible.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Tiffany Sensible. I live on Woodrow Avenue, and I'm also an officer of elections for the city. And so I wanted to also express my concerns about security at the new location for the registrar's office. As our registrar just explained, security at the new location is not adequate. And so I think there are many concerns, but I just wanted to tell you about an experience that I recently had working the polls at the last election. So I got to serve as Assistant Chief for Ward B, which votes at the library. And I don't know if you know what it's like to enter the lower level of the library, which is where we, the, yeah, okay, so you're familiar with what it's like. There's a section to the right of the entrance that's almost all of the way enclosed, and so as poll workers, we have to get there very early when it's dark, because it's very dark, 5:00 a.m., and I was the first person to show up. And so there's a little bench right on the outside of that nearly enclosed area, and I was sitting there waiting for the chief to show up to unlock the doors. And so a few minutes later, another poll worker showed up, an older woman, and so we chatted for a few minutes, and then all of a sudden, this man popped up from the enclosed area. And so it was very alarming. We were startled, of course, and that just happened in June. That was at the Republican primary. And so I just wanted to tell you about that to kind of point out that security should be a big concern right now, and I think this is something that deserves immediate attention. It appeared that this spot was the regular sleeping place for this man, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention and kind of reiterate what Lisa said, that the spot really needs to be secure. And of course, early voting for the November election starts in just a month, so I would encourage you to take action immediately.
Thank you, Ms. Sensible.
Mr. Jamie Sensible.
My name's Jamie Sensible. I also live on Woodrow Avenue. I just wanted to also can express my concerns for the security. I did meet my wife that afternoon when she, and she told me the story, and if I was able to, I would have stayed in the parking lot for the rest of the afternoon to make sure she came out that night. Of course, I was not able to do that. We've got kids and a lot of stuff to do. But I'm very concerned about my information, anything that the registrar has on me, if someone was broken into, something happens, it seems like, at this point, the building would be easy to access, maybe. I don't, I don't know for sure, but obviously, it's not going to be as secure as where she is right now. And with her expressing her concern about that, our registrar, I wonder where does the liability fall? Because, you know, if my information is breached or something's taken and I'm violated in some kind of way, where does the responsibility land after that? So I'm hoping that something will be done and about the security of the building. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Evelyn Cotton.
Good evening, Evelyn Cotton, 720 14th Street. Nice to see you back, Assistant Mayor, Vice Mayor. I am here to say, I suppose, thank you for all the construction that's going on in the Tree Streets area right now, the road construction. I have no idea what they're doing, if this is one project or multiple projects, but I just wanted to make sure the city council members are aware that they currently have a section of 14th Street blocked, which is daily. 13th Street, a section of it is blocked, a different section, and, and now a section of 12th Street is blocked, all three every day. And so, you know, I'm assuming that EOC is aware of what roads are blocked, but for the citizens, it's like driving an obstacle course. And so I would just encourage you, if that is one company, to, I know we have to do all the construction in the summer, that that's just, we live in Virginia, but boy, it'd be nice if there was, you know, just a little bit more oversight on that so you're not blocking three different major thoroughfares. I mean, it's hard getting to your own house, but thank you for the construction and the very rough roads they're leaving. Very rough.
Thank you, Ms. Cotton. That's it? All right. That brings us to the last agenda item of the day. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'd like to make that motion.
Mr. Allen, is there a second?
I will second.
Dr. Haasetter, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh.